Bothell City's Council, Bothell City Council is back from executive session. We're going to start with the, no, not that. We're going to start with our first public hearing, which is AV 17-115, public hearing for a street vacation northeast corner of 103rd Avenue Northeast, Northeast 185th. We have a staff, I'm going to officially open the public hearing. We have Don Feen with the Utility Development Services Manager to provide a presentation. And Mr. Phelps. Hi, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Don Feen, Utility Services Manager. And this is the public hearing regarding the northeast corner of 103rd Avenue Northeast and Northeast 185th Street. The property owner at northeast corner of 103rd and Northeast 185th is requesting the street vacation. They're represented here tonight by Brian Palladar, who I'll introduce at the end of my presentation. The street vacation is for a portion of the right-of-way. If vacated and the property is fully developed, it will be consistent and parallel with the existing 185th Street frontage, which would be consistent with the development to the west along 185th. Staffs reviewed this street vacation request and determined there's adequate right-of-way remaining after the vacation to accommodate the city's proposed northeast 185th Street improvements and the proposed development plans. And here you can see on the screen, so the wedge-shaped proposed vacation area. You can see how the alignment is off currently with the existing right-of-way and the roadway. Street vacation process, street vacation is the termination of the public interest in a right-of-way, whether opened or unopened. It's governed in RCWs and the Bothell Municipal Code. The petition method of vacating a property requires that abutting property owners initiate the street vacation and has to be signed by two-thirds of the property, so abutting the street to be vacated. For this particular property, there's only one owner. Here's the site plan. Their proposal's 13 lots. Two lots would be impacted by, if it was not vacated, they could probably get one unit, though, out of those two. So they would lose one to two units if the vacation does not go through. You can also see there's a public plaza that they're going to build on the corner right The application and associated documents been reviewed and the staff is forwarding this street vacation request for your consideration. The appropriate cost for the street vacation is $20 per square foot, which is 50% of the appraised value. And that's consistent with our Bothell Municipal Code. So to summarize, the city's no-defined need for this property. The street vacation converts land from the city ownership to private land. We'll realize property excise tax and utility revenues, relieves the city of the maintenance burden that we'd otherwise be left with by a small, ungraded, odd-shaped piece of property to maintain. If we were to make it into a plaza, we've estimated about $30,000 would be required to grade and improve the piece of the land. As part of this development, once again, the applicant is creating open space in the northeast corner, which will be privately maintained. So our recommended action is to adopt the proposed ordinance for a street vacation. And with that, we're going to have a public hearing. Brian Palladar is here to speak on behalf of the applicant. And then council can discuss, deliberate, and make a decision on the hearing and whether to grant the street vacation. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
City Attorney, is it three minutes for public hearing, in this public hearing? Or is it just five minutes for each person in the...
For this one, for this one's three minutes because it had not been decided to extend it for a longer period of time.
Got it, okay. Mr. Palladar, did you get that, about, so, three minutes?
Oh, I didn't think about the three minutes. I will make it brief then.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Brian Palladar. I'm with Group Architect. We're the project designing architect on the project and here to represent the property owners who cannot be here tonight. So to follow up on Mr. Feen's presentation, the proposed street frontage vacation is attempting to take, or to put essentially into private use the area that's proposed for the street vacation. And it's largely, it's in existence due to essentially a deviation and discrepancy in the street plating lines. Northeast 185th is on an angle and that angle kind of offsets. And so it's an atypical condition. And the reason for the vacation is on our street frontage block between approximately 103rd, where it jogs, we've got several hundred feet where those two don't align. And this is really the simplest way to rectify some of that situation. One of the questions that had come up before by the council was specifically the public benefit. As Mr. Feen mentioned, there'll be a corner open space that will be developed and privately maintained. One additional piece of benefit that's been offered up by the proposed applicant for the vacation is to complete the frontage improvement. So we prepared two exhibits here. The upper exhibit, just for your reference, and you should all have a copy of it hopefully at this point. Previously, when this was proposed, the frontage design was that there'd be a curb bulb up here, sorry, point, curb bulb up here in this general area. The portions of the rest of the frontage would be occupied by street parking. And then the typical roadway design is to blend back to the existing curb line. The existing parcel next door to the east has already been recently developed, I think in the last 10 years or so. And so we'd be blending back to their existing curb line. There's also a proposed project that is further east, and they also have a new development proposal. So in the prior design, there's this odd-shaped section that was in-between. It was suggested by the city that that be smoothed out. Our applicant has agreed to perform that work on the city's behalf. And so the public benefit would be not just the creation of the open space and obviously the money paid for the vacation area itself, but further, this portion would then be removed and blended out together. So effectively removing that portion from the city's, I guess, costs of any future time. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions if it's appropriate.
We don't usually do questions of people that give presentations. So does anybody else want to speak during the public hearing? Go ahead, come up and give your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Edie Lee, and I live on 103rd Avenue at the corner of 187th and 103rd. And I wanted to give you background that I believe this intersection is a hot mess. And I'll tell you why. When I come south on 103rd, and the reason I'm giving you this background is because I think it affects whether we want to do this street vacation or not. When we want to come south on 103rd, I can't see any cars coming from 185th because there's so many parking spaces there. So because it's uphill, the site distance is approximately 70 feet, what we've measured, and I think the required is 155 feet. So I just saw in the feedback to this street vacation about, we don't want to make a bus pull off because we need those parking spaces. And I think it creates a dangerous situation. The other problem I have is that when I'm coming from 185th trying to turn onto 103rd, the people park all the way to the corner on both sides of the street. And so people coming down 103rd are going to center themselves on the open space, and I have a hard time getting off of 185th. So I think a right-turn lane would actually be a really great idea, anyway. So that's my feedback. I think the fact that they're going to bump out there, I think it might affect the site distances. I don't know, but I don't know if we've looked at that. I also think because we're going to add more people to that, there's going to be a lot of traffic using that intersection. And already, it feels like it's a hot mess because of you to Bothell parking there, construction parking, people going to downtown Bothell. I feel like people would rather park in the street than in our free parking lot, in our garage. So anyway, so I just wanted to, as a person, I feel like I keep, a citizen, I keep bringing up these concerns to City of Bothell, and I don't get anywhere. So I thought, well, maybe if I say it in a public hearing, maybe something will happen. So I just feel like, I don't know if this street vacation is actually going to make it worse, but I do know that right now, the situation is dangerous. And I feel like it's, the cut-through traffic is making it worse. And I wanted to give my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. I didn't get your last name, but Edie, could you get a business card from the city manager and she'll get in touch with you? Or if you can give her a call, if you're not getting responses from staff, that'd be great. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment on this hearing? Seeing none. So now we move into council, I guess let's do council questions real quick while we got, before we go into deliberation. Any questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
So I'd asked the question in my emails, in my email to staff, and the applicant also mentioned that there is this corner open space. So can you bring up the slide that has the different colors where it shows that open space? The right-of-way that is proposed to be vacated and the open space that's created in its So the applicant mentioned this corner open space. What is the square footage? And can you point to it on that graph? Is it the green, the yellowish-green shaded area?
This area, right here.
And what is the square footage of that open space?
I would have to measure it. I don't know offhand, I'm not sure if the...
And then it also looks like it extends like a foot-wide strip down the page, which would be east on 185th. Is that all the public open space, that strip?
I believe that's going to be a landscaping strip.
Because one of the arguments that staff made was that this is, that the original trapezoid of open space is an oddly-shaped strip, or oddly-shaped, what was the exact words? Oddly-shaped right-of-way, which would be a visual blight. And I don't, this is getting more oddly-shaped. We're getting, the proposed public open space is getting more oddly-shaped to accommodate unit two and three on this diagram. I mean, before, we had a trapezoid, which is a pretty decent amount of space, and now we're getting what looks like a golf club with who knows how many square feet in that corner. So I don't think that this is an improvement on the public open space, what I've seen so far. Why, why are you estimating the city's cost at developing this as a $30,000 concrete plaza, when it could simply just be grass?
That was, that was an idea that was brought up by another staff, and we put together an estimate on what it would cost to make it a plaza, and I calculated it. That's really all I can say to that. I didn't, it could be, it could be anything you want it to be from the city. We would have to maintain it either as improved or unimproved. It would have to, it would be, if it was grass, we would have to mow it or whatever. So that's, that was just, just an idea that could be what the property could be.
And then I noticed in one of the staff responses to our questions last time, could the city require that in exchange for this vacated right-of-way, that we would, for example, want affordable housing? And the response was, the city cannot require that, which I'm not sure why. I mean, if we own the property, we've been able to put conditions on other sales. I don't know if right-of-way is somehow different than private, or property that's owned by the city. But in any case, we cannot require any portion to be affordable housing. But would the applicant offer to make, to provide for affordable housing in this development? So I guess that is a question that I would pose to the applicant, because that, in my opinion, is more valuable than what we're seeing here. And even though the argument can be made, well, there'll be more units, more units does not translate into affordability. We see that in downtown Seattle, we see that here in Bothell. So I'm not going to accept the argument that if we are, if they're able to provide one or two additional units, that by default is going to contribute to affordable housing. And then...
Hey, Councilmember Sandberg, can they respond real quick? Mr. Palladar, did you have something you'd like to say to that?
Well, I was asked to, specifically by the applicant, to address the question about affordable housing. We did investigate that with them. We talked about some of the various ways that additional public benefit could be offered. There, after considering the continuation of the frontage connection as one type of cost, and then also the affordable housing component, their preference was to provide the continuity of the frontage. The cost of making the units affordable was beyond what the combination of costs was what they're willing to do.
Thank you. And then we also received a letter today from Terragon Properties, which I believe is representative of, or management for Bothell 185, which are the condos under development immediately south. And it's my understanding that the city attorney and the city manager have not, were not able to review that letter ahead of time because they were not in the recipient list. So I have a concern of approving anything tonight without our legal review of that letter. And I appreciate the comments that we got from the member of the audience about traffic in that area. I know that that particular resident has commented to the city before. And so I think that her first-person account of what traffic and safety is, you know, from a first-person perspective on the ground of the intersection is really important. So I appreciate, I appreciate hearing that testimony. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions from council? Are you ready for a motion? Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Can I get clarity, is, are these apartments or townhouses? Because I thought they were townhouses, but the owner sounds like it's apartments, so now I'm confused.
They are townhomes.
They're townhomes.
They're intended for sale.
Okay. While you're up here, I have one more question. So when I look at this map, the little piece of green that pops out beyond the proposed property line, who will maintain that?
The line...
Because it's outside of the proposed property line.
Correct. This is the parcel line after the proposed vacation, so anything outside of this on any frontage would be city-maintained.
So you're going...
That's my understanding.
There'll be a little line where you guys stop maintaining and where we begin maintaining?
Probably at a technical level. I mean, and the reality is, is most homeowners, for example, would take care of their maintenance frontage for a small portion of that.
Okay. I have another question for staff. Do you have a response in terms of the visibility issue? And are we able to make requests in regards to plantings or such that might impede further any sightline issues?
We could research that. I haven't been made aware before tonight about any of the, any of the problems. But we can, we can have our transportation engineer look at that. I think, it sounds like that's an issue, I'm not sure if this changes that issue, but it sounds like there is an issue according to the, to the citizens. So I think it's something we would have to have our transportation engineer look at, I think regardless of whether this goes through or doesn't go through.
Do you know in terms of elevation, is there currently a hill there and it will be flattened? Or do you know anything in terms of elevation that might change the visibility?
I'm not sure if, I can, I can, I'd see if Brian knows that situation.
The site is largely flat. I mean, any grade change that occurs along the streets is down to a few percent at best.
Okay, so...
So I don't think, we're not talking about the typical hill situation where parked cars or something like that would be further exacerbating sightline challenges.
I guess, I guess that's, I had one other question that I had asked, and I actually got a response. And I don't think anyone's had an opportunity to look at it, but I was curious because we are paying, we would potentially be paid 50% of the value of the property. However, obviously, there would be a savings in the maintenance. But in addition, it looks like our total estimated property tax revenue would be an additional $2,736 per year, which is a heck of a lot better than paying for maintenance. So that, I just wanted to make people aware because that was a question I had asked previously. I guess that's all my questions.
Councilmember McNeil?
So I had a couple of questions on the, is this development subject to a traffic study?
Yes, all developments are.
Okay, so would that traffic study take place before the 13 units would be approved? So let's just say, for instance, there's an issue with the line of sight.
Yes. So I think that would be a good opportunity for us to look at that situation.
So I guess that leads me into my next question. Should we be doing that study first to find out if there is a problem?
No, beginning tomorrow, I think we're going to put the word out and try to get somebody to look at it.
Okay. I had another question on the, so the 13 units, so if this is not granted, would the development still have 13 units?
I, I think maybe the applicant should mention it, but I, we estimate it's going to be one to two units impacted, but I think I'll let Brian speak to that.
Sure. Some preliminary studies have yielded 12 units. So the two units on the end, units two and three in this proposed site plan would be combined with obviously the building outline being maintained down. And so there'd be a net loss of one unit. It is worth noting as, that this property, as well as others on the street, including the parcel to the immediate east, that when the back, the setbacks in this zone are measured from the back of sidewalk, per the zoning standards. So this is a great example of where, just as the building to our east that's existing, as the sidewalk pulls away because of the angle of 185th, the buildings are now allowed to go up to the edge of the property line or five feet, whichever is more restrictive. And in the case of the building next door, it's already built with the building up to the back of the property line because the sidewalk has pulled away. So in the case of not granting the vacation, you will still get a building that's built up to the, to the property line, essentially to, excuse me for the mouse here, up to this line here. And so this would be the, the distance between here, if the vacation was not granted, would simply be that landscaping that then would be under public maintenance because it would be over the property line.
Okay. And are, the 13 units right now, as they're shown on this plan, what is the parking ratio for those 13 units? Are they internal parking?
Yes, all site, all parking is contained on-site. I believe it's, what is it, 2.25, I think, units per dwelling unit. So the, each unit has, all but one unit, I think, has a two-car parking garage. One unit here, unit number three, is a one-car stall. And then additional parking is included over here in a dedicated garage. There's additional stalls that are required per the zoning code, and those are located over here off the alley for both visitors as well as the private units. So all required parking is provided on-site.
Okay, thank you. And then I did have one more question. As far as the, the frontage improvements, Councilmember Sandberg mentioned a golf club, it looks like a hockey stick to me. But I was curious, what would it cost the city to maintain that piece versus what would the income be if those are sold units? Can you, can you give me kind of a comparison that can understand that a little bit?
Well, I think, I actually didn't receive the information that Councilmember Durer received, but I think she had the number on that for the property tax. Other things that could be received also are some utility revenues as well, and real estate excise taxes. So those are the monies that would come in with the additional unit that would come in. The maintenance, we don't have a cost, and I don't know...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You don't need to continue. Our city manager actually sent something today. I just was able to see a copy of it, and it did answer my question. So, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions? Are we ready for a motion? Oh, Councilmember Spivey?
Well, I was, I have one of the same concerns that Councilmember Sandberg had, as far as city manager and city attorney have not had an opportunity to look at the most recent email. And because of that, I was willing to make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date certain.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember, Spivey seconded by Councilmember Sandberg, to move to a date certain. Do you have a date, or just...
I would defer to the city manager to best choose that date.
You want to speak to your motion?
Sure. I think that with, you know, there could be potential litigation in this, depending upon the interpretation. And I think it's worth our city attorney to have a chance to look at this in depth and consult with the city manager on this. I think that once they have had this opportunity to look at that, and give feedback to council, I think this will go pretty quick. I don't know that it would require an hour at the next public hearing or the continuation of it. But I think it's worthwhile that we do our due diligence before we take a vote.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. So we did hear from the city attorney in the, I guess I can't say what you're saying in the executive session, can I? Never mind. Okay, she can't, we're in deliberation. All right, so is there any further discussion on the motion? Motion is to delay to a date certain, chosen by the city manager.
Correct.
Vote fails three to three with Councilmember Freed, absent an excuse. So do we have another motion? I can't make a motion. I'll second it. So it's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by me, to approve the staff-recommended action, which is, I have it in front of me. Which is to adopt the proposed ordinance vacating a portion of 185th Street Northeast. Is there any discussion on the motion? Do you want to speak to your motion? Council, Deputy Mayor?
So, you know, there was some discussion about affordable housing. In my book, townhomes are affordable, so that's where I stand on the affordable housing. Until we have an affordable housing ordinance, we're not able to force anyone to do affordable housing or even incentivize them. So we're stuck, but I do think... or even incentivize them. So we're, we're stuck, but I do think townhouses are a great alternative. That was, my first home was a townhome. I appreciate the Ms. Lee's comments regarding the visibility issue. However, I do think having a traffic study done should, my computer just turned off, should help in terms of, now that, especially now that it's been brought to staff's attention to look at ways to alleviate that issue. I, I noticed there's a huge tree on the corner too that might be impeding some of the, the visibility. And I'm certain that we can also request that shrubbery and whatnot aren't put in the way of, of visibility. And I, as I mentioned before, it, it takes maintaining cost, maintenance costs off of the city's back and then allows this, this property to be more fully used and collect property tax. So that's why I'll be supporting this motion.
Councilmember Spivey.
Great, thank you. It's not that I'm against this vacation, but I am against voting against it right now. I, I, again, I think we need to do our due diligence and have our legal department look at this, make sure that there is nothing hiding in the weeds on us. So not that I, it's, again, it's not that I'm against it, I'm just against it right now, so I will be voting no.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm going to be voting no. I don't think the benefit the city gets from this is justified by the, either the price of their, their cash purchase of the right of way or long-term maintenance costs that we, that we don't have to pay. We're giving them property for them to increase the number of units that they get. And what we're getting in return is this little hockey stick, golf club-shaped open space that when I've asked what the size of that is, the whole right of way is only eleven, one thousand one hundred and seventy-two square feet. So that little chunk of it probably can't even be a hundred square feet. So what we're, we're getting in return is, is so modest. And yet we've had a member of the public tell us that there is a problem with that intersection. And we're going to move forward and then we're, we're going to say, well, we're, we'll address that after the fact. And for all the people who have written us over the years about development that's happened in their neighborhoods, after the, after the fact, whether it's a right-of-way vacation or code adoption, after the fact just isn't very satisfactory for them because there are a lot of complaints. We did receive this letter late today that has not been reviewed by our attorney or city manager, which I think it is important that that be reviewed. And, well, in terms of affordable housing, I think that we should take every opportunity that we can, even if it's a little bit-by-bit opportunity to increase affordable housing. Because the new townhomes that are being advertised at Dawson Place just west of the library are advertised starting in the seven hundreds. That's, that's still, they're townhomes, that's still not affordable. And we, we've had opportunities throughout the years to make minor adjustments when somebody was getting an increase in yield, like with the junction, when they were getting an increase in residential yield, we had the opportunity to, to at that point say, okay, if you're going to get an increase in yield, we should get something in return, and affordable housing satisfies goals of our community. So, and, but every time we do it, we say, well, you know, it's just that little bit and we don't have an overarching policy. And every time we do that, we miss these little opportunities along the way. So had the applicant said, yeah, we're willing to discuss affordability, that to me is a more meaningful give than this odd-shaped, who knows what size it is, open space. Because I just don't think, I, I think we're not, as a city, we're not, we're not, we're not extracting the benefit that we should be from the right of way and the property that we own. So I'm going to be voting no.
Anybody else like to speak to the motion? So I just had a couple of comments. So I've been by there a couple of times now, and I think the, there's a tree right on the corner there, one hundred and eighty-fifth and one hundred and third. And I would imagine that to me is, at least from my car, is a huge sight, sightline issue, which would be resolved from this. We have exhaustedly asked, asked the staff about higher, better public uses of this shaped property and, and shape property, and they basically have come back and said, no, there really isn't room for a bus turnout. There isn't a room for, you know, just about anything. And I think that the council has come up and asked to make sure that we weren't giving away something that we could use in the future. The municipal dictates what we can charge for the property. And so that's where we're at, where we're, where we're getting, we can't ask for more than that, it's dictated to us. And then the last thing is that, just looking at it, you know, this is the, the part of the yard of this property, and it's been there like that for a long time. And if you, if we kept this piece of the yard, that's all it would be, is just a piece of this yard, and there'd be this new development behind it. And to me, I, I guess I'm a little shocked by how much we've been concerned about this piece of property. We don't vacate roads very often, so I could see why, as a council, you don't really want to give up a piece of property without making sure that we know whether or not we need it. And I've been convinced by the staff that we don't need it, we're getting the maximum amount of money we can for it. It's been legally reviewed by our attorney that everything's fine. Yeah, we received an email, but I'm going to side with the city attorney on this one, and I'm going to be voting in support of it, so. Seeing no more discussion, go ahead, place your vote. Let's see here, passes, can it pass? Yeah, it's not an ordinance, okay. Passes four to two with Councilmember Spivey and Sandberg in the negative, and Councilmember Freed absent and excused. And that ends that public hearing, and we're on to the next one, which is AB seventeen dash one-one-six, Public Hearing Ordinance Establishing a Downtown Utilities and Frontage Improvement Reimbursement Area. Officially opening the public hearing, and we're going to have Don Feen and the city attorney provide a staff presentation.
Thank you. Once again, Don Feen, Utility Services Manager, and Paul Byrne, City Attorney. Public hearing regarding the downtown utility and frontage improvements reimbursement area. Brief recap, we've been here a few times before. Reimbursement agreements are also referred to as recovery contracts or latecomers agreements. They allow the property owner, in this case, the city, who has installed street or utility improvements to recover a portion of the costs of those improvements from other property owners who later developed property in the vicinity and who use those improvements. Our cost apportionments covered in our downtown utility plan, which was presented to council in two thousand and eleven. It's been used ever since then for the purchase and sales agreements. And necessary public system improvements in the downtown revitalization area have been constructed by both developer projects and city capital projects. Developers of city surplus properties such as Six Oaks have constructed, required public infrastructure improvements in the downtown. The city's also been reimbursed for downtown capital projects through surplus property purchase and sales agreements. And the remaining projects constructed by the city that benefit downtown properties are covered by this proposed ordinance. There's a little map of the properties. The main two area corridors that involved in this downtown reimbursement are Ninety-Eighth Avenue and Multway. Here's a look at the Multway Boulevard frontage that'd be involved on the reimbursement. Part mainly the sidewalk areas there with the improvements on the sidewalk, landscaping and lighting. And there's the improvements on Ninety-Eighth Avenue, would not include the Horse Creek Channel itself, which is paid for by the Storm Project. Ninety-eighth again. And to summarize, what we've gone through before, this reimbursement area is a mechanism for developers to pay their share of improvements. The multway improvement area included two items that were removed as atypical improvements for Bothell. And that was subsequent to us listening to the, to the property owners at the open houses and then conferring as staff. All other improvements would be required of the developer for these sites consistent with city policy. Once again, the city's had two, held two open houses with the owners and made summer visions. There's not enough evidence to support that private contract costs are significantly different than public prevailing wage costs in this current economic time. The city's large project also has economy of scale benefits. And the charges are in, are for construction costs in two thousand and sixteen dollars, which are cheaper than the cost that would be incurred by development if they were to redevelop sometime in the future. Public hearing information, staff sent notices of this hearing to the affected property owners as required. Recently, after the notice was sent, staff learned that ownership of two parcels had changed, and we had insufficient time to provide notice to the new owners. So staff recommends that council hear tonight from affected property owners who did receive the notice and continue the hearing to September fifth to provide opportunity for the new owners to speak. With that, it's a public hearing. We can hear from the owners and any other public that wants to speak. And our recommendation once again is to continue the public hearing to September fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Feen. The only person that was signed up is Kiran Heinz. He's still here? There we go. In just case you weren't here earlier, there's, you get three minutes. Thank you. Oh wait, I'm sorry, it's five. My bad, five minutes.
Five minutes? Thank you and good evening. My name is Kiran Heinz, Acquisitions and Development Director for Widener Apartment Homes. Here regarding the proposed assessments on the four parcels we own as, under Bothell Way Apartments LLC. The property we own lies on the west side of Ninety-Eighth between five twenty-two and northeast, northeast one eighty-second street. As I shared with you at our, at the June thirteenth council meeting, we've owned this property since April of two thousand and eleven. And despite being surprised by the Horse Creek project and having our development plans put on hold, we've managed to maintain a very positive relationship with the city and in particular, public work staff. In fact, we've substantially cleaned up the property in recent months and are, have had discussions with staff to allow for public access to the property in the interim as a, as a temporary park until we proceed with development sometime in the coming two to three years. We have attended the study sessions that were mentioned by Mr. Feen. We appreciate staff's efforts. We even met with Don and Steve Morikawa to review the cost breakdown and information they've provided in response to several of our inquiries, and we very much appreciate, appreciate their efforts. But that being said, we still have several substantial concerns. We're in the process of undertaking our own review and estimates and disagree with the Gray and Osborne or the, the memo that was undertaken to argue that the, the current costs done by the, by, in a public project wouldn't differ substantially from a private, privately undertaken project to address these frontage improvements and utility connections. We plan to provide our analysis to staff and council in the coming weeks and hope that a reduction will be considered. Furthermore, I'd like to state that, you know, this, this proposed assessment, it results in, you know, a total charge to us of over three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And to refer to it as frontage improvements to me seems mischaracterized. After having walked this property, it, it certainly feels to us that it's more of a, or this, it's more of a pedestrian connection as opposed to a, you know, what can be characterized as, as frontage improvements. Seems like it's more of a larger effort and part of the downtown revitalization purely as opposed to just new sidewalk, curb and gutter and, and the normal street trees. In fact, it was characterized that one of those study sessions is kind of the Cadillac of frontage improvements. And that was acknowledged by, by public work staff. As I stated in my comments in June, we are not opposed to paying our fair share, but we cannot agree that this proposed assessment is, is equitable in the amount that it currently stands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? Anybody? Nobody. Okay. Is there a motion by council to, receive, continue the public hearing to a date certain of September fifth, two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil, I think it was, to continue the public hearing to a date certain of September fifth, two thousand and seventeen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. How are we doing? You guys want to take a break? Council's okay? All right, let's get into the next item. Do you want a break? Oh, you want a break? Okay. Well, the city attorney needs a break, so we're going to take a break and be back at eight twenty. Is that long enough for you? Eight twenty. All right, we'll be back at eight twenty. All right, Bothell City Council is back from break. We're going to move into new business, which is AB, with AB 17-117 Beardsley Park dedication. We have John Keats, the director, to provide a staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. My pleasure to be here tonight. I'd also like to introduce to you tonight Steve Doty and Kevin Johnston. They are with the Beardsley Development Group. So just watching the presentation tonight. I'll move into the presentation. So the dedication of this park is, the park site is actually in the blue there, located at the north end of the, of the development. And this process started actually back in 2012. The Bothell Municipal Code, Section 2108110, does allow a developer to offer parkland and capital improvements as total or partial payment of required park impact fees. In 2012, as I mentioned, with the community development department to get a request from the developer. And the developer requested a park impact fee credit in exchange for building a park at the north end of the project, which is between 112th Avenue Northeast and Beardsley Boulevard and dedicating it to the city. The project is now known as the Village at Beardsley Crossing. On March 27th, 2014, the city responded to the developer. The community development director listed five steps leading to city council review and a request for acceptance from council for the park dedication, which is why we are here tonight. And the steps for the approval included, number one, the value had to be, for the land of the park area, had to be determined through by an appraiser paid by the developer. Number two, engineered drawings and specifications, including construction cost estimates, needed to be submitted to the community development department for review. A maintenance and operations agreement was required for, to be drafted to address who is responsible for paying the annual surface water fees, replacement of sculpture should they be damaged or destroyed, and long-term asset replacement. Number four, the city will then need to accept the donation of the land, the park development, and the maintenance and operations agreement. In pending city council acceptance, the property proposed for dedication will need to be separated from the overall development via a short plaid or other instrument, submitted by the developer and reviewed and approved by the city. So the project status as of tonight is developer has met the conditions outlined in the previous slide, steps one through three. And step four, we're here tonight for consideration of acceptance of the donation of the, of the land, the park development, and the maintenance and operations agreement. This is just a quick picture showing the site. You can see the building there in the background, the park area in the foreground. And I'll get into a little more of the park board review here in a minute, but we've actually had two designs that have been submitted for, for review by the parks board before. And this was the first one. And you can notice in the middle there, there was a quite elaborate piece of artwork down on the, I guess would be the section of the property close to Beardsley Boulevard. There was another piece of artwork, included some landscaping, passive area, some park bent, or picnic tables landscaping. The centerpiece of this project or this, this proposal was the artwork. It was very elaborate and ultimately deemed to be actually very expensive. The second design, which is the one we're considering tonight, is the one before you hear. That offers a nice landscape area, passive area. It does have a bus shelter, a sculpture at the north end, which includes some, well, what looks like some swimming salmon. It's just a good area to sit down, read a book, relax, do whatever. And it's just pretty much your classic urban passive park or urban pocket park. This gives a side view of the, the second design. You can see out in the front there, the sculpture of the salmon, gives a little more side view of the resting area, picnic tables, park benches, hard surfaces, and then trees, landscaping, and so on. So as I mentioned, this project has been reviewed by the parks board on two, two occasions, 2014 and 2016. The park board, after reviewing design number one in 2014, did recommend approval. The board subsequently reviewed the second design in 2016. And after reviewing that design, option number two, they did, actually did not recommend approval. And you heard from a couple of park board members tonight citing some reasons for that decision. The first was the board members felt option one was superior. While it was, option was, was received favorably, the design was ultimately deemed to be well beyond the developer's budget. We later learned that the artwork alone in that art, that first design was in the range of $400,000 just for some of the art pieces. So that was, that was pretty expensive. The park board, Parker Recreation Board also felt that park impact fees would be better served being allocated to other community-based projects rather than a smaller urban pocket park. They also expressed some concern about cost benefit, the proposed park size and the, the estimated cost. And lastly, the parks board expressed some concern approving this Beardsley Park dedication would set a precedent for future action in the future, which I think you heard from Roger tonight when you mentioned. We also had one public open house style meeting here at City Hall held in the spring of 2017 this year where we invited the public to come and, and view the project as well. So potential project benefits, park provides an appealing landscape entry point to Bothell from the I-405 interchange. The site can potentially serve as a welcome to Bothell gateway point also. Development of the property adds an urban park and passive use area to the city park system. And the developer will maintain the property guided by the city parks maintenance standards, which the Parks Maintenance Crew has established and we included in with the, the maintenance agreement. So the recommended action is to approve the park impact fee credit for the Village at Beardsley Crossing in exchange for the parkland dedication and development and a maintenance and operations agreement. And that concludes my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for your presentation. So I had a, a couple of questions. Do we know what will happen to the land if we don't dedicate the park?
I might have to hand that off to somebody else, but I think they would be required to do some minimal landscaping of the property. But I think the, the degree to which that would be required is, I'm not exactly sure. They wouldn't be required to pull in a full, full form park, I don't think.
And the, I'm trying to understand the process by which this happened. So it sounds like it was a proposal process outlined by a previous community development director?
Well, it's allowed in the code and the developer wanted to take advantage of this option. The previous community development director, you know, basically told the developer how the process works. The developer made the request. Community development director responded with the steps necessary to get before council for consideration of approval. So it was, that's how it evolved.
So it's not a binding agreement?
No, you council has, my understanding of this process is council has the authority to approve or deny this request. And my understanding of it is, was always, you get to this point and it's, it's council's decision.
And do we know how often this occurs, this type of agreement versus just collecting impact fees? Is, is this typical? And?
This is the only one I've experienced since I've been here. So I, I, I don't think it happens very often. I know there was one request a few months ago for something relatively similar, but we said no, it really didn't. The proposal didn't qualify because the site they were looking at was not in the capital facilities plan.
And then can you clarify, was it a unanimous vote by the park board?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, on page 157, the third paragraph down, it outlines fertilizing requirements. And I wondered if, if we were to go forward, could we make changes to the requirements so that it's natural fertilizer, but rather than?
Well, we could certainly come to developers and ask them about that. They've got a lot vested in this and I, I would say that we could open that door and ask that question.
I just think we spend a lot of time trying to save salmon and then we pour I just think we spend a lot of time trying to save salmon, and then we pour fertilizer back into the groundwater. Doesn't make any sense to me. I guess that's all my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Customer Samir?
Can you put up Design Number One? Because there's a, there seems to be a lot of, I mean, a lot of the decision-making centers around the difference between Design Number One and Design Number Two. And yet, Design Number One wasn't in our agenda packet. And a Parks Board member contacted me and said that they, I guess there are only two Parks Board members who were present for the 2014 decision, one of which testified this evening. And, and all the other Parks Board members had not seen the 2014 design because it, it wasn't presented, and it was described that it didn't exist. So, is this Design Number One the one that was presented to the Parks Board in 2014? So, is there a way to blow this up? Or can you describe this Design Number One? Because the Parks Board in 2014 felt that that was a sufficient design. And now, they feel in 2016 that it's, that this second design is inferior to the first
Well, I, unfortunately also, I wasn't here when this design was proposed. But from my understanding of it, is if you look in the tan area in the middle there, where that little half moon goes through, that is the centerpiece of the design. There was an art sculpture in there that was pretty elaborate. And I think that's one of the key issues with the, with the design as it was presented, is I think the Parks Board was really enamored with, with that proposal. As I mentioned also, the, when they, the developer went back and started looking at the cost to implement something like that, the cost alone for the artwork was really prohibitive. Now, the circle down in the lower left-hand corner, that's some additional artwork. And I think they also were looking at doing something fairly substantial with the, with a bus stop there. So, the remainder of it, as you can see down in the right-hand side, is just landscaping and grass. And up in the left is a hard surface area with some picnic tables and entries. And so, the, the big thing I got in the conversations with the Parks Board members from the first time was, they really, really liked the art sculpture.
And then, so, in the Design Number Two, it looks like it's all one level, with the exception of some steps that are going down to Beardsley Boulevard. And in Design Number One, looks like there's, you know, kind of a variety of levels. Is, you know, that, because it looks like there's, there's separation between different zones of this park that are shown by those gray curved blocks. I mean, I'm just trying, I guess I'm trying to get at, something significantly changed, and you're telling me it's, it's the artwork from, from one to two.
Yeah, I think if there was a key issue there, that would be it. And the artwork just was, ended up, once the, when that was presented to the Parks Board, my understanding, it was very conceptual. And when they started to crunch the numbers more and, and work with artists or designers, that's when they found out that the estimated price and the prices, these are three, four years ago now, so were, were pretty, were pretty high. So, that's, that's what I have gleaned from my meetings with the Parks Board and the discussions I've had with the proponent of the developer.
And then, this is just a general question. Is there a limit to how much a developer can value a provided park space so that they can use that mechanism as opposed to paying a cash park impact fee? Does our code establish some kind of limit? And what prevents a developer from, say, inflating the cost of what they're providing so as to significantly or completely offset what their park impact fees would be paid in cash?
I'm not sure I could answer the first part of your question. But the second part of your question is, certainly, there's nothing preventing a developer from trying to inflate the value of the cost. We've just tried to do some due diligence with having our own landscape architect looked at the design plan and the cost estimate, and just verifying that they were in, you know, within reason. So, we did do that and got an affirmative response. So, and I don't know that I could answer your first question about the code.
I think that might be an interesting thing for the Parks Board to undertake, because they've expressed this concern that they feel that the, the cost of this park could be applied elsewhere in the city more efficiently with cash on hand. And it seems like, we were always kind of, I think, concerned about the reverse, that developers wouldn't put, wouldn't accommodate park space on their own property. But this situation is they're accommodating park space. And the question is, is, is this a reasonable cost estimate? Because, you know, like, we look, we're considering, well, we approve, the council approved, selling right-of-way, and they're going to provide public open space. And what prevents them from?
Well, in this case, in this case, I think developer would be due, or would have to pay the city, I think, $343,000 of park impact fees. So, when you apply that to this project, that would be, it has to be equal to or more than the value of the park impact fees that they would be required to pay if they weren't going forward with this project.
But if I was the developer, and I wanted to use this little piece of property that really isn't developable as a part of my park impact cost, it behooves me as the developer to make it as expensive as possible to offset what my cash park mitigation fee would be. And I'm, and what I'm hearing is, it doesn't seem like there's any limits in our code to that. And then, I, so I asked the question, why should council ignore the decision of the Parks Board? And the response was that this process started back in 2012. The developer successfully met the conditions required up to City Council review. But if I understood correctly, your response to the deputy mayor's question was, this, that still doesn't, even though the process was initiated in 2012, version one approved in 2014, parts of this five-step process have been accomplished. There, we're not bound to, to honor those first steps. Is that correct?
My understanding of the process is you get to this point, and it's a council decision as to whether you approve or not approve the project.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions? Customer Spavy?
Great, thank you. So, the, we've been good partners in this process so far, and there's, and I guess there's this expectation that we move forward and approve this. And so, if we don't approve this, is, are we setting ourselves up for a legal challenge?
The decision of council is given great deference, as long as it's not arbitrary and capricious. It would survive most legal challenges. We would have to hear what the complainant said, what they allege in their complaint to make a final determination. But speculatively, legislative decisions are given great deference.
All right. I appreciate the Parks Board and their work on this. I don't know that I could say that, from what I'm looking at here, that Design One is better than Design Two. There's just, I'll be quite honest, some, that artwork, I'm not sure what I'm looking at. I have a better feel for what I'm looking at with Design Two. I get, that's the only question I have. I'll save my comments for deliberation.
Any other questions or comments, customer Nick Neal, Neal, sorry?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you had mentioned, so $343,000 roughly was the park impact fees. And if I, if I heard you correctly, you said that they have to, they have to match that equally? Is that correct?
Yeah, my understanding is, is they couldn't come in with a project that was valued at $300,000 when the park impact fees that are due are $343,000. So, it had to be equal to or above what they would be required to pay just for the park impact fees.
So, whether they pay the city park impact fees, or they develop the park, the cost should be roughly the same? Is that correct?
At the very least, the same.
Okay. Do we, so, between Design One and Design Two, I get it as, I get a sense personally that Design Two is, is heavy landscaping. It feels heavy to me. Do you have a sense between Design One and Design Two, what the community engagement would be? How many people could get into the park, Design One versus Design Two, use-wise? Is it more useful in Design One versus Design Two? Or, I know there's sculptures and art in Design One, but I'm saying, what is the use? And you're talking about picnic tables. How do you, how do you foresee the community using the park in Design One versus Two?
Well, I think Design Two would be something where if you're living in the area or live in the apartment, you might go down there and just relax. Also be a place, if you're catching the bus, you could sit up in the park, wait for the bus, you know? But it's, you're pretty much, the design is a very common urban, you know, passive design, where you've got some landscaping. So, I would imagine people eating their lunch there, maybe taking their, their animal out, or their dog out, and walking around a little bit, viewing the art, artwork at the north end of the, the park. But, you know, I think a lot of it would just be, a lot of what you would see people even do here in, at City Hall is read a book, or listen to some music, just relax, and just a place where you can, you know, get away from the hustle and bustle for a few minutes and, and just relax. So, you know, it's, it's not a complicated park design. I think in terms of uses between the two, I mean, you'd probably accommodate, you know, very similar. But, you know, the first one might be a little more of an attraction with, with bringing people there with some, with some perspective, very elaborate artwork. But, you know, this one here too is, has its benefits in terms of just providing a nice urban, open space, you know, passive area.
Okay. So, I'm trying to, in my mind, envision somebody from outside of that area going and using that park. Like, what's, what's the draw to that park? Now, I live there, I want to go out and read a book there, that's fabulous. I want to go outside of my unit and go have lunch, or whatever. But isn't that the same location where we have Beardsley Public House and all of that? I mean, there's restaurants and things like that. So, I'm trying to get a sense of the draw to bring people to that specific park for $343,000.
William and Mucks itself, I don't know that it would be a huge draw. But just from my own perspective, if I'm out on a walk and I want a place to find a wayside and rest for five minutes, maybe get a drink of water, and something like this would be, would be doable. It's right on the North Creek, right across the street from the North Creek Trail, and just down the road from the, from the new North Creek Forest. We've talked about this site as possibly being a little bit of a connector between that trail and the forest. Another item you could do is, you know, if you're out on a bike ride, you know, again, a site that, you know, this would be an appealing rest point. So, I could see maybe groups of people, you know, that would be in the area. At the, at the public house down there, maybe having dinner or something. It's a nice, appealing little open space where they could go down and maybe relax after dinner or something. So, you know, it's not an attraction, say, like a sports field, or maybe a neighborhood park. But I think it does have some features that would, would bring people to the, to the site.
Is the site itself contained enough to be safe for a skate park?
I don't think that would, my own personal opinion is, that probably wouldn't be a great site for a skate park.
I'm asking that question because we're spending $343,000 there. If we spent $343,000 somewhere else, we might be able to get a skate park. So, that's why I'm asking the question. It's not that we would put it there. I just want to get a sense for the people in our community on how they would use it, and what the needs are within our community. So, I'm trying to, I think the sculpture is actually really cool, because now there's art associated with that. And there's, there's a draw. I just, personally, I can't see the draw in Design Two. I mean, it looks great, it looks fabulous. I mean, I can understand the plantings and stuff. But I want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. When we spend $343,000 on something, I want to make sure that the community can use it. They're going to go there to use it. Otherwise, would we spend $343,000 at Bothell Landing, or another park, or Shelton View Forest, or something else within our community where we know there's other, other types of draws to bring people there? I want to make sure this is not just us creating an open space on a development site. I guess is where I'm going with this. And I just, I just want to make sure we're talking through that.
Yeah, I understand. The other thing I think to keep in mind is, the $343,000 is, is, you know, that's a set amount. The developer would also be bringing upwards of $350,000 of additional, you know, additional resources to the project. So, you know, it is leveraged somewhat that way. So, it's, it's just not the $343,000 sitting there by itself.
Okay, thank you.
Did everybody have a chance to ask, do you have any questions, customer? So, I have a couple of quick questions. I thought I saw in one of the emails that we've updated Municipal Code 21, 2108110, so this option for a developer is no longer available. This, this, for this project, it is, because it's five years old. But let's say somebody comes in now, it's, it's not available. Is that, did I read that correctly?
I don't think so. I looked at the code the other day, and the language was still in there.
Is it still in there? Okay. So, in that diagram, it looks like it just got drawn on there that the bus shelter would be located at that location. Are the, is there, are they going to build a bus shelter, or is that something somebody else will do?
That's a good question. Do you guys?
King County Metro is where to put that in.
So, it's King County Metro will build the bus shelter?
It's a very busy bus stop.
It is. Do we, do we get to see, or, I mean, we, we, not the council, but is, is the city going to have receipts or something like that about the actual costs? Because there's always the, like, we have engineers' estimates all the time, and usually the cost is, well, it depends on the economy. But the cost could be higher or lower than the engineer's estimate. Are we tracking that as part of their reimbursement or not for the impact fee?
Well, like any project, I think the way this is set up is they, the developer would be required to come in with pay requests. And we were probably asked that with each pay request, they back that up with documentation of whatever work that has been done. And so, if they're asking for $50,000, we would ask for backup on why, you know, why, why you're asking for the $50,000.
Okay, so we would get backup? Okay, that's good. And then, just one last quick plug. I went to a Welcome to Bothell for a Day or Lifetime sign fundraiser on Friday. And is there, I don't know where they're planning on putting that sign, and I know they're trying to raise the money for it. Is there a home for that in this location?
I think one of the tenants of this project has always been some sort of gateway provision coming in off the I-405 interchange. So, you know, I think there's certainly that potential.
We only want one of them, because it's a maintenance nightmare, because people paint over certain letters and the word Bothell. But I just want to throw that, they have some money they've already raised, you know, if there's something that we could do to maybe cite it here for them, or whatever, that would be an interesting change, and not to make this stop or start, because we want to find out about that. But just making the plug. And that is all the questions. So, so there isn't, okay, never mind, I already asked about the Municipal Code, it was not updated. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. Is there a, you want to go another round of questions? Is there a, you want to go another round of questions? Not unless you make a motion to extend?
Motion to extend to 9:15.
Second.
Did you say 9:15?
Yeah. Okay, 9:30. What do you want?
We have an hour and 15 minutes more of agenda left on that. All right, let's move, is that second still standing, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
10 o'clock. Move by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Sandberg to extend till 10 o'clock. Please vote. Passes four to one with Councilmember Spivey in the negative and Councilmember Freed absent and excused. Councilmember Spivey?
I'd like to speak to my negative vote.
Okay.
I just, we've got a very robust schedule and we're at our 30 minutes that we've allotted for this subject. This, our schedule took, is taking us to 10:45 theoretically already. So that, just trying to be mindful and respectful of everybody, trying to keep us on task. That's the only reason why I voted no.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Motion, anybody?
Move the recommended action.
I'll second it. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the park impact fee credit for the Village of Beardsley Crossing in exchange for parkland dedication and development and a maintenance and operations agreement. Is there any discussion on the motion? Would you like to speak to your motion?
I'd like to speak to my motion. Thank you, Mayor. I'm supporting the staff recommendation because the, we've got an apartment building there. We've also got neighborhoods in the area and a lot of people that come through this area. And no park of any type here. So to take money in park mitigation and to move to another part of the city that's either paying for something that's already there or improving something that's already there and leaving a hole in, in this part of our city, even as small of a park as it is, it's still a park. It's still someplace to go. It's still someplace to meet somebody, to walk the dog, to read a book, to eat your lunch, to, if you've got 30 minutes to wait for your, for your bus, at least you can go up into the park and sit at a bench and a table there instead of just at the shelter. We, we need to be mindful of the people that are living in that area and provide them at least a little respite, as small as this may be. They, they, they deserve a park in their neighborhood too. And that's why I'm supporting this.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I'm really torn, but through deliber, questions, I guess. I've, I've kind of landed on that I'll be a no vote for several reasons. One is I, I give great deference to our park board who volunteers their time. And so when they unanimously make a decision, I feel like we need to listen to them. I also think, the question I was going to ask, which I'll just throw out there, was I could see a hybrid of the two coming together. And the reason that I'm saying that is because, one, it's not accessible. The second, the second one's not accessible. There are stairs. And I feel like that makes it difficult for people, all people to enjoy. And I also think the design, when it comes down to it, it's not the sculptures for me. It's that it doesn't feel open. It feels like private park for the development. And I, I do have a problem with that. It seems very insular. I haven't been, like, the curves and stuff. I will say the second design has a lot more trees, so that's very appealing to me. But I do feel like it looks like it belongs to the development. And so people will not be using it. It won't appear to be a public park. And so that's my other reason. And thirdly, saying that there's no open space or park around, the North Creek Forest is like, I don't even know, a half a mile down the road. So I feel like that, that is available to people. So for those reasons, unfortunately, I'll be voting no. It wasn't an easy decision.
Anybody else like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Agnew?
I will not be supporting the motion. I think our Parks Board has spoken. We need to listen to them. I think one public hearing is probably not enough. And with that being said, I will not be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I wanted to make an amending motion that the design include a gateway entrance treatment that incorporates, but not limited to, signage that indicates entrance to the city and that it's a public park.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember Spivey to include in the agreement that there would be a gateway entrance.
Treatment.
Treatment.
May I speak to the motion?
Sure.
In the event that the motion, the underlying motion does pass, I think it's important that that element be there. And I don't see that it's expressly stated in the documentation.
All right, any further discussion on the many motion? Seeing none, please your vote. Passes with Councilmember McNeil in the negative and Councilmember Freed absent and excused. So we're back to the underlying motion.
To make an amending motion?
Go ahead.
In the event that it passes, I'd like for it to be accessible, as in wheelchair accessible.
Can I address that? It is, it's, it is accessible. It may not, you may not be able to see it on that, but it is accessible. It has to be accessible by law.
So I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Please your vote. Passing unanimously, Councilmember Freed absent and excused. Back to the underlying motion.
Can I speak to the underlying motion?
Yep, go ahead.
So I also struggle with ignoring the decision of the Parks Board. I know that they gave it a lot of thought between version one and version two. But I was swayed by Director Keat's response to Councilmember McNeil's question about, you know, what is the purpose and the draw of this park? You know, in isolation, it appears like it's just an appendage to the Village at Beardsley Crossing. But the way you described it in terms of, you know, being accessible from the North Creek Trail and, you know, a pathway on to North Creek Forest and respite for bus stop users. I mean, if there's any way to advertise that a space is open to the public and not just for the sole use of the residents that live next door is putting a bus stop there and people from the community using it because it's next to the bus stop. So I think with, with the amending motions that we've made and in recognition of where it, how it serves in the scheme of parks and the history of, you know, how, how this process was started back in 2012, I, right now, I'm leaning towards support of, of this, of the recommended action.
I can speak to it. You want me, do you want me to go? Okay. So I live near, near this park and I go, this piece of property, I go past it quite a bit. And there are a lot of traffic of people that use the Beardsley Crossing for food or people that live there. I don't know how many units you guys have there. You're building another building, but I'm guessing, what, 450 units? So, and then there's probably multiple people in one unit in some cases. So there are a lot of people that ride their bikes past here. There's a lot of people that are jogging through there constantly. And so I think it would be a really pretty awesome park, to be honest with you. There's a Starbucks right there. There's a place to get a sandwich that, you know, you just make that part of your bike ride or whatever you're doing. I also think it's important that it's, we're basically getting for a $700,000 park for $350,000. With the many motions, I hope that's something that's agreeable to the, to the developers. But I think the, the thing that really kind of swayed me looking at the council packet is that we've been drawing this along, dragging this along for five years. And, you know, if we were going to cut bait on somebody, I think we should have done it before five years have passed. This has always been part of the plan with this development agreement. That's probably not a development agreement. It's probably been part of this plan with this development proposal. And I just, it just doesn't feel right to me. And I, I feel really bad that we're not, I always do want to listen and follow what our commissions and committees recommendations are. But at the same time, I think it's really important to be really mindful of the relationship that we have. You know, if we, if we're into this and we have every single letter back and forth from our city staff to the developer, that there was no indication whatsoever that we were not going to allow them to exercise this piece of the municipal code. And so to me, I think it's really important that we kind of stand by our word and do what we said we're going to do. And I, and I think it will be a great park. I don't think that it'll, it's a real big drawback or a, a bad location for a park. It's, it's, it's a good location. So does anybody else want to speak to the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I will, I will actually not be supporting the motion. I too agree that we need to ensure that we continue to have a positive relationship with the developers in our community. However, I, I have some reservations on the design. So my no would be on the design. I don't know, I don't feel comfortable that we've gone far enough with the design and understanding the design and how it's going to work for the community. I agree we need to have a park. I think it'd be beautiful for 450 people. But I'm more wanting to understand what that design is going to be. So my no vote is not, I don't support having a park there. It's more, I don't support the design that's in front of us. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak to the underlying motion? No, we're ready to go. Go ahead, please your vote. Does everybody know what we're voting on?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
I step aside, as everybody knows. Just want to look at the city attorney if I could participate or not.
You have the right to vote.
Okay.
So we're just, I don't know what you heard or not, Councilmember Freed, but so we're voting on to approve the park impact fee credit for the Village of Beardsley Crossing in exchange for parkland dedication and development and a maintenance and operations agreement. And then we also made two many motions. One is to make sure it's ADA accessible. And the other motion was to make sure there's a gateway signage or something like that for interest to the city.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, please your votes. Sorry, I had a Christmasy. Passes, passes four to three with Deputy Mayor, Councilmember McNeil, Councilmember Agnew in the negative. So we are on to AB 17-118, Fire Department update. And we have, I believe, Acting Chief, Rookie.
Good evening, Council. To begin with, to start the presentation, I'd just like to thank all of you for the support you have given the Fire Department throughout the years. And especially in the 1718 budget for the increase in funding that you did though. I, I know you had a lot of deliberations last year in budget. And we do really appreciate your support and, and the additional funding. And we're, and we're working with that very hard right now. So I'd just like to thank you for that and, and appreciate it very much. So tonight, we just wanted to go over just a brief overview as, as we're doing a transition, as we're getting ready to bring a new chief in, getting ready to, to look at a strategic plan and planning for the future in the department. This is more just an overview to kind of show you guys where we're at and some considerations that you're going to need to, to be looking at in the future. And to do this, just to try to keep everything on an even page, we, we did a five-year statistical. So we just used that because we had good data for the last five years so that we can keep comparing things. To begin with, just to show you, this is our population. And, and to remind you, we've included District 10 with this since the Fire Department covers not only the city, but we've also got 10,000 residents in Snohomish County Fire District 10 that we, that we cover as well. So you can see in this amount of time that, just in the last five years, that we've got a 12,000 population growth. So as you can see, things have been, been increasing. And with that, even when we look at the housing and the development that's going on in our city right now, we know that population is going to keep increasing. And, and especially if we look in, in planning into the future, when we look at our MOOGA boundaries and, and that, that population's just going to continue to grow. Total incidents for this same five-year period, you can look from 2012 to 2016, and we've had about 13,000 increase in call volume in that amount of time, which equates to about 20%. This is a slide that just shows you, and this is, this is BLS transports. So this is our aid cars transporting not medic transports or advanced life support. But, you know, this is aid 42, aid 45, aid 44 rolling out of here, rendering assistance to a citizen and transporting them or calling transport. And, and the reason that we bring this up is if you look at, if you look at 2012, the, we transported more patients than we had to call for AMR. And the reason for this is we have a criteria depending on how many units are in service, type of day, traffic volume, those things, where the patient's going, all leads into whether we, whether we take the patient to the hospital or we need to call an ambulance. One of the things that we've always strived to do is if we can, when, when we, when we go and render aid, is to actually, to, to, to really give full service, is to transport that person to the hospital and not have to hand them off to AMR, even though AMR does an excellent job. But you can look at that when you're, you know, when you're in a stressful time like that, when we have to hand somebody off to, to another agency quickly to get them to a hospital. So if we look at that from 2012, and then you can just, you can go through the years, it, it started to creep up in 13, 2014, we're, we're pretty even. It's about 50/50. You move all the way to, to 2016, and AMR basically doubles what we're able to transport. That also includes what we call subsequent calls. When the aid cars are all out and the fire engines have to actually go, then they don't have the ability to transport. So it just gives you a good, a good idea of the compression factor that's happened with us with call volume and those kind of things and our staffing and, and how we don't have the ability to transport all the patients that we used to just as we become busier. And, and I have a correction on this slide and is for your, in, in 2015, the time is actually 7:48, not 8:06. So when we went back and reviewed today, so it's not quite as high as that 8:06 shows. And this is basically is what this is, is your city council's adopted level of service for us to get there and render aid is seven minutes and 15 seconds. And as you can see, in 2012, we were obviously, we were at 7:39, stayed there for 13, slight dip in 14. But as you can see, we're, we're, we're going in the wrong direction as far as trying to meet council mandate in, in getting to our responses. Here's a thing that just, and, and this is our five-year snapshot, just to show our staffing in the department. And your yellow is your uniform positions, your green is your civilian positions. So we've been constant at 57 until 2016, when we added two additional staff for the uniform personnel. uniform personnel. And with the annexation in 15, we added half a civilian position. And that was basically one position going from halftime to three-quarter, another position going from three-quarter to full-time. Now, just to give you an overview of our, of our capital needs. And the other thing, when we do this, remember, you know, Public Works has, has done an incredible job of, of always stepping up and, and, and doing their, their part with, with maintenance of our, for our facilities and our fleet and, and, and just so, as we go through this, realize they're doing absolutely everything that they can to, to maintain our equipment and our facilities. So our fire stations. Station 42 was built in 1980. We had an addition in 1995 and, and since then haven't had a lot of upgrades. So you can look at some of the things that we need. For example, windows, siding. We cite the roof on the training deck just because of the fact that's what we do, do a lot of training. It gets a lot of impact. It's, it's tremendously hard for Public Works to try to keep up on that because you know most roofs and, and you can imagine from Public Works, when they've got people that are, that are throwing hoses and running around on a roof all of the time, it creates problems for Public Works in, in keeping that, that dry and those things. So it, it, it's something that we need to look at. I think the biggest thing that you can look at in our stations is when we look at our, our staffing, is that basically we're at capacity. If you look at Station 42, we don't have the ability to house anyone else right now. And so that's one of the biggest things that we look at. Also, as we look at this, as the city expands and those things, we look at our security for, for not only our parking lots, but for our stations. And, and that's going to need a significant upgrade when we look at our strategic plan and we start to plan for the future. Station 45, built in 1985, and this was originally a fire district station. So that's actually, it was, it was Snohomish County 10 when this was actually built before the city did the Snohomish County annex. Some of the upgrades that we need there is we need some more privacy in our dorm rooms and remodel of our kitchens, our bathrooms and the ability to wash and clean our apparatus at our station. Station 44 is located inside the city of Bothell, but is, is owned by Fire District 10. And, but our public works staff does the maintenance up there. So when this was built, it was built as a volunteer fire station and now it's a fully functioning station. You can look at the, the picture right there, kind of tells the story of, of the front apron. As soon as you open the doors, you're almost right on, right on the main street, which, which makes it difficult for us, especially in traffic congestion and those kinds of things. So when we look at street improvements and those things, that's something that we're going to have to consider in the future. For our fleet, and in this, I only put what the city of Bothell owns, so I didn't include Fire District, Snohomish County Fire District 10's apparatus. So right now for the city, we, we own two fire engines, one that is first out at Station 42 and then a reserve apparatus. We have two aid cars at Station 42. There again, one is our first out and a reserve apparatus, a ladder truck and a wild land rig, which, and that was deployed already this summer over to Eastern Washington. If you look at the, the rest of our fleets, Snohomish County Fire District 10 operates the two first-out engines at, at Station 45 and Station 44 and both of the first-out aid cars at those stations as well. And then they have one reserve aid apparatus, a 1979 Ford four-wheel drive. And that's just kind of a quick overview of, of just showing you what, what, what we're looking at for, for the future and just to help you start to consider things as, as you're moving through budgets and, and making decisions moving into the future. So as the new fire chief comes on, we'll be looking at the strategic plan that's going to analyze staffing and fleet, facilities, equipment, all of those things that, you know, obviously with the, with the funding that you gave us for 17 and 18 is, is a huge help and, and we're very appreciative of that and, and, and all of this, all of the city that, that continues to work as a team. But you know, we're, as the city increases, we're, we're going to look at, we're going to be needing that as well. So with that, I'll just open it to questions.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate it. I, I don't know if you can answer this question or Finance Director, but do we have any, any way of knowing or guessing what the fire impact fees might collect per year?
They just started this year and I, I don't have a, an answer for you. I don't know what the Finance Director does. We do know when we looked at them originally that it'll be a couple of years before there'll be enough in that fund that will actually be able to make an impact.
I don't know offhand. I will work with the CD Director and look at development that's out there and crunch some numbers for you though.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
When the city participated in the regional fire authority planning process, there were lots of points of contention, but the one point that wasn't really under, was not contended was the state of the capital facilities of our fire stations is, just as they exist and in relation to the partners that we were considering at that time. So the, the capital improvements that you describe are significant costs and it's, it's my belief that that's not something that could be covered exclusively under operating budget or fire impact fees. What you're describing to me is, is needing a new funding mechanism like a voter-approved bond or something like that. So I just wanted to put that out there so that the public is thinking about that because yes, we did just ask and gratefully received approval for the streets and sidewalks levy, but our fire stations are in need of significant capital improvements. Is the capital improvement for Station 44 shared between the city of Bothell and Fire District 10? Or if there were capital improvements, I should say, would they be shared between the two and, and how does that agreement work?
If it was a, if it was a capital improvement, for example, a new building up there, which the commissioners did put a second building on there, I'm going to say off the top of my head about four or five years ago, but I'm not exactly sure on that. Snohomish County 10 funded that on their own. Basically to, in a very, in a very quick read or digest version, we do repair and maintenance. They basically, anything that's new, any capital improvements would be under Fire District 10, that they would do that.
Okay. And then I think in our agenda report, there was some discussion about fleet replacement and it looked like this year, we're, we're replacing training, code compliance and public education vehicles?
We're, right now, we're, we've actually just received, actually the fourth one just came in. So we've got four vehicles that are being replaced as our staff vehicles, two in code compliance, one in training and one in public education. And two of them are being worked at presently at city shops right now. So we're, we're in the process of that.
And then, but we need an aid card, aid car, which is the project, the projected cost of that is $225,000. And the staff response is the plan is to move the new aid car ahead of the second fire engine and would be purchased in 2018, which would then move the fire engine purchase to 2019. And it was my understanding when we adopted the last biennial budget, the 2017, 2018 budget, our asset replacement fund went down to zero. So it doesn't look like we're, we would be able to buy an engine in 2019 if the asset replacement fund goes to zero at the end of 2018.
What happens is it goes to zero at the end of the year and then it gets replenished over the next biennium. And so there's actually money going in every, on a monthly basis. So it never actually goes to zero. We just don't have any reserves set aside and we're going to come up against a year where we don't have adequate funding to actually replace the things that we need. So we've talked to council about this before. It was something that was decided during the Great Recession that we would hold back on putting money into reserve so we could maintain operations. And it's one of the things we'll be coming back to talk to you about in the fall, about what strategy are we going to use? We implemented one strategy and two years ago and we need to upgrade that. So we'll be back in, I believe, September to start talking about that stuff.
Okay. And I guess that is the extent of my questions, although yeah, I'll be curious to see if the engine being moved to the 2019 asset replacement schedule, when it would actually be able to be funded.
Yes, as the Finance Director said, we're, we're definitely, the, the other issue that we all know as things increase, that, that the expense of all our apparatus are increasing. So as we project these things and that, we've got to adjust those budgets as well. We'll be coming to you in, when you get back from your recess in September for approval to buy the engine that we're specking, that we're specking right now.
The engine or the aid car?
The, the engine that, that we're due to purchase and then we'll be, okay, so we're, we're looking at purchasing an engine in 17 and then moving the aid car to purchase in 18.
And then a second engine in 2019?
And a second engine in 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
Thanks, Chief, for the presentation. So our population's increased over 10,000. Our calls are up 1,300 and we have no significant increase in our staffing. Am I correct on that?
You're correct on that. The, the two people that we have added to uniform personnel has been a lieutenant in training and a firefighter in support services, just to help with, with fleet maintenance and, you know, just all of the things to keep the stations running, logistics, those type of things. And basically, we've had about a 20% call volume increase in that amount of time.
And you were saying your transports are down and we generate revenue with the transports. Now, are, they're down because we have a rig out of service?
Not down because we have a rig out of service. They're down, there, there's, there's several reasons for that. One of them is, is call volume and, and our officers, we have a, we have a whole set of criteria for our officers and they're looking at, for example, when they're going out on calls, are all three stations in service? Is everybody out? You know, what time of day it is? And, and I, and I talk about that to begin with. For example, if all their stations are out, then we're going to call an ambulance because it's, it's usually a little bit quicker so that we can get somebody in service to respond to the next aid call.
Yeah, that makes sense. Response times, I was kind of surprised and kind of happy. Now, are your response times, are the minutes that we have in here from dispatch or from the time you were dispatched?
From the time we're dispatched till we get on scene.
Okay. I looked up some of the King County statistics. It takes 1.4 minutes for you to be dispatched. That's because the 911 call goes to the Bothell Police and the Bothell Police send it off to NARCOM. Be that as it may. So our total response times are generally over eight minutes and 8.4 in 2011, 8.8 2012, 8.9 2013, 8.714, 8.715. It looks like our population's getting older because 30% of the calls are ages of 64 to 84 and yet we had 20% of our calls were at ages 85 and over. I, I see that continuing with the amount of adult care facilities that we have.
We know East Riverside well.
We know East Riverside well. I, I'm real concerned about Norway Hill and the response times there. And I say that because in 2015, we had over 100 responses in that area. And I know our response times there are probably not as good as they probably should be.
When we look at, when we look at going out and doing the strategic study, I think you'll see in from the, from the RFA discussions, if you look at and you, you can look at and you can go from Lake Washington all the way through Woodenville and you can take that strip along 160th and just kind of look at that as a peninsula that whether it's Northshore, Kirkland, Bothell or Woodenville, none of us cover very well, okay? It, it, it's, it's a difficult area. It's, it's not a nice little square box that you can just take and put a station in the middle and say that handles it. It's a long strip that all four jurisdictions have difficulty with responding to, just to the geographical locations of the present stations. When they did do the RFA study, the consultant did come back and said, if we do have a hole, it was actually the best place to have a hole because we get the fewest calls. So, but that'll be addressed, I think, when we look at the strategic study in the future and where we need to, if we need to, if we need to add a fourth station.
Yeah, I think that's changing with some of the communities we have there, the Piper's Glen and, you know, some of the others, Verde and that. I do want to end this, my comments, with an attaboy. King County survival rate is 65%, which is the best in the world. There's no question about that. Bothell's actually was 67%. So you did a great job. Now, probably that was the case because 78% of the time, we had citizen CPR on that patient right away. But my kudos go out to you and the gents and the ladies that are performing the jobs and, and getting out there. I know Erin's not here tonight, but she says I bleed red for you guys and there's a lot of truth in that, you know? And, and I care a great deal about the community. And I, I think one of the biggest issues we're going to see with the aging population and, and with the community is on the EMS side. That's 80% of our call volume and, and we're going to have to address it eventually. And I think Councilmember Sandberg was right, we're going to have to go out for a levy or something and, and kind of fix this.
You know, I, I think as you look at that, you look at a strategic plan for fire, you look at police, that, I think in the future, there will be some type of, of public service levy.
Councilmember Spavy?
Great, thank you. Thank you for the study. I can only echo a lot of what Councilmember Agnew said. The, it's, it's interesting that, yes, we call it the fire department, but mostly do EMS. That's the, our bread and butter. It's becoming plainly obvious that I think we got to fix some things in our own infrastructure of the fire department. And then we all, we also have to be addressing the, the needs for the public on our response times and our staffing levels so that we're available. I, I think it's just, it's clear that the next chief has his work cut out for him. And this is a, a smidgen of what he has coming up and I look forward to seeing the comprehensive plan that he comes up with in the future. So, but thank you for your work on this. And just a little FYI, I believe Station 44 opened up in 1980. That was my station when I started volunteering here, so.
Thank you for that. And, and you're right, I think the, the new chief will have some challenges. It's also going to be a tremendously exciting time. If you look at the way our city is developing and everything, not, not only for fire, police, for, for the entire city, it's, I, I think we should really be looking forward to and embracing the next five years. You know, city manager is aware of this and, and is working on this, on, on this hard. So I think everybody's looking at it as, as a team effort. So I think everybody's looking at it as a team effort and we feel really well supported.
Councilmember Reed?
Great, thanks, nice to see you. I imagine one of the things that deters or has an effect on our response time is the lack of a south station. I'm curious, can we have a south station that's strictly staffed by EMS without a fire apparatus?
You could, but when we look at cross-training our firefighters with both fire and EMS, it's found to be nationwide the most efficient model. And if anything, if you can look at, for example, Seattle, and as large as it is, Seattle runs two aid cars for their entire city and most things done with fire engines. So there's a variety of models out there that we can look at in the future.
Well, if I hear you, as I thought, with the EMS response rather than a fire response, it seems that one of those vehicles staffed in a station, a very limited size, would cost far less to get us started in the south rather than a full-on station staffed by an engine and EMS truck or car, whatever the right language is.
It could be. You're talking the difference between, one-person difference between a, if you look at Station 45 and Station 44, they're both three-person companies and they're jump crews. So they'll take either the aid or the engine depending on whatever the call is.
But the cost of the apparatus to have two new apparatus down there, I wonder how different that is. Is it half a million dollars to have a fire engine and $250,000 for an aid car?
About $225 for a new aid car, probably about $600 for a new engine.
Yeah, and so that was my point, for an aid car, if we could just get started to help down there, response times, we've been talking about a need for the southern fire station for quite some time. I'm just wondering, as far as first response and getting those times down in that section of the community, if we could start with that as a first step?
We could, yeah. That'll be something, it'll be addressed in the strategic plan.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your leadership, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you Chief, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the strategic plan.
Okay, and see you all Saturday.
That's right, yeah, we will see you Saturday. Wait a second. Okay, next, we're going to go into closed session pursuant to RCW 4230-140, sub 4, which is labor negotiations. Do we anticipate coming back to the DIAS after that? All right, so we will be adjourned after the labor negotiations.